Stanford to call me. How many, how many weeks apart?
Because of that little stroke I have out here.
Yeah?
See, four months, five months apart. The what?
Yeah, I can't squint like this in.
On pre air.
Yeah. Automatic sunglasses?
Yeah. When you see better, oh man.
Yeah.
Yeah, again. More like Mary Ellen is saying she's having a hell of a time. She had to get shots or something.
Something else.
Yeah.
With the eyes then.
Yeah, she said her eye, her one, her good eye got the worst.
Is it diabetic?
I think so, yeah. So they give her another shot and it might be the last time with glue or something.
Yeah.
Oh, so that just scared me out again there.
I gotta.
That's scary, guy. Do your good eye and that one gets bad, dude.
Well, nobody around here has what you call vividly lens. All the people that do surgery and stuff like this, this town in Minneapolis. One time only, won't never need them again. Best they're staying.
Were you at your son in Minneapolis?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd wanna go in, you know.
This would be a hundred and fifty, you might.
Yeah, okay, well. Two oh seven year, we're calling me to order. Not too big of an agenda on here, so maybe too long. I know later point that clerk, I guess.
Ah, figure.
Well, okay. He'll do a roll call.
Michael Barrett, chair.
Yes.
Robert McLean, vice chair. Al Bar Thomas clerk. Warren Alton, treasurer.
Here.
Robert Sherman, director here. Jack DeGardle, director. Marcus Tyler, director. Tim Loos, superintendent.
Summary overview of agenda, over ten and Luke.
Thank you, Chairman Barrett. After our, a lot of time for any public comments and delegations, we will have the school board meeting scheduled. An update since the last board meeting, followed by the superintendent's report portion of our meeting, which will then be followed by enrollment reports and the business manager's report. After that, we will move into the consent agenda, which has ten items on link today. First one is approval of the board of minutes, board minutes from the November meeting, and then we have nine personnel hires as part of our consent agenda, and then an update to the substitute list. So pretty cut and dry. There's no closed session today. The board will then move into the few regular action items on the agenda. This includes proving the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million, five hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Followed by certifying the twenty twenty-two, paying twenty twenty-three property tax levy at six thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, which will then be followed by acceptance of the secondary school boiler replacement project. Next, the board will address the terminations of employment for three employees effective December twenty-first, or today. We will then close our meeting with miscellaneous items and adjournments. Under miscellaneous, the board will address the first reading of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school master's government. Then we will adjourn for meeting. Thank you.
Anything to be added on the agenda or anything? Not a motion to approve.
The move.
Question by Nelson.
Question.
Taken by DeGardle. Approve agenda for December twenty-first, two twenty-two. Further discussion. And I'm all those say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Public comments and delegations, anything? At least go there. Yeah, we want to report.
Okay. The first item in my report is a reminder of our school board meeting schedule coming up over the next month. For true, first of all, on January third, or I take that back to fourth, Tuesday the fourth, I mean, right, Sherry? Cause the third is a holiday.
Well, it's the fourth then?
The fourth, yeah.
Yep, because January third is a federal holiday, not a state holiday. That will be our reorganization meeting, two o'clock. As of course, very important that we have a forum so that we can make everything official for the next school year in terms of video assignments, you know, official attorney of record and newspaper publication of record and that kind of thing. Then our regular meeting is on our regular third Wednesday, January eighteenth, two P M. Then February fifteenth will be our February meeting, two P M. Those are the next three meetings on the docket. No update since the last board meeting, but I can go into the rest of the report now, which isn't a whole lot since we have a short month within right now, but on Friday, December ninth, the Red Lake Secondary Complex staff participated in a workshop with Sun Clans Consulting that filled you in last month about what that would be involving and entailing. Excuse me, the training was attended by employees from all categories and departments. Each training was a half a day lasting three and a half hours and covered important topics related to the health and wellbeing of students and staff through the development of healthy relationships and support networks for students. And Jack was at that, this afternoon training, and I thought it was really, really good. And I got a lot of positive comments. The next step in the training will include students as we seek to identify student peer leaders. That training will occur on January twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Like I said, I received many positive comments from staff members during and after that training, like looking forward to improve behaviors, grades, attendance, graduation rates, and more coming out of this program. On another note, another program, the Read Write Program continues to be very successful in our district. We are seeing some great gains in student reading growth. As of the end of November, November thirtieth, twenty-nine percent of kindergarteners have developed a concept of word and established a relationship between written and spoken language. Twenty-three percent can identify all of their lower and uppercase letters, almost a fourth. Fifty-four first grade students moved from stage one to stage two. I'll explain the stages in just a bit. Forty-one percent of second graders are in stages three, four, or five. Fifty percent of all third graders are on stage four or five. Seventy-five percent of fourth graders are in four or five. Eighty-eight percent of all fifth graders are in stage four or five. What does this mean if you look at the next page? The Read Write Primary Core Curriculum Program is not organized around grade levels. Instead, it's organized around the five stages of development required to become an excellent reader. Five stages. Stage one is a non-reader. Stage two, highly predictable text, in other words, kids can read words in context. The cat is brown. The dog is brown. By the time they get to the horse is, the student probably recognized the root brown. Predictable. Stage three, highly predictable text with some changes. I saw a red balloon, dad saw a green balloon, mom saw a purple balloon. They start seeing differences. But by the time they get to stages four and five, they are early readers able to do short sentences like we went on a trip, we saw the desert, the desert is hot and dry. Stage five means student is becoming an excellent reader with longer, more complex sentences and paragraphs. Once a student exits stage five, they're an excellent reader at their grade level. Our goal is to get students there by grade. If you look at those five boxes, this is really a bit of good news here to share with you. Top two boxes on the left and the top one, October of twenty twenty-one, over a year ago. We had a hundred and ninety-four students in stage one, non-readers. By May of the same year, last spring, only seventeen were still non-readers. That meant we moved a hundred and seventy-seven students into being either a level two, three, four, or five reader. In October twenty-one, we only had twenty-one stage five readers. By May, we had two hundred and ten, ten times of, a tenfold increase. That's remarkable. This year, the bottom three boxes, starting in September, we had one hundred and twenty-seven students in stage one. Next month, only a hundred and two, knocked off twenty-five. By last month, November, took care of another twenty-six students. Between September and November, we had fifty-one students move out of stage one. In terms of stage five, we had ninety-nine students in September, who added twenty-two in October, and another twenty-five. So forty-seven on stage five. So Read Write is probably the best program I've seen. This is a really good result. Any questions?
Uh, besides, you know, just your Read Write, then listening to F P R, there's another program.
Letters? What is it called, Letters?
Uh, no.
Good.
Uh, it has, has to do with schools across the whole nation not reading right, and everybody, and everybody else is recognizing that, and maybe that's even better than Read Write, but let's stay with Read Write here.
I do remember hearing a couple of stories, I don't remember what that's called either.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I just heard it a couple days ago.
Yep, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the nation is realizing that, hey, reading is important, and they're realizing that in the past, you know, they never gave it much attention.
Right. But, but I like, yeah, your idea of stick with this, cause it seems to be working nice. Probably be better than what they're talking about. Okay, moving on to the facilities director report. They've been working with W S N Architects and Martin Mechanical on a design to replace the nineteen fifties steam boiler here at the secondary complex. The bids were received on the thirteenth of December, and they're ready for school board approval later on in the agenda today. We'll hear more about that later on this afternoon. The next page, the Everalute system install is now substantially complete. That's these monitors above the door here, and pretty much in every area of this district. We're working on the install of additional monitors in a few places that still haven't been totally finished. The snow removal team and new equipment have been working out well this winter. We'll continue to monitor snow removal, egress, egress, insulting throughout the winter. The district HVAC control project is going well and is now ninety percent complete. The new automation and training will be ready to launch the first part of February. Then during winter break, as in right now, the custodial staff will be working on building maintenance such as painting, filter changers, and deep cleaning. That's happening right now.
Just a quick comment, the snow removal team, uh, coming through from Mitch and Northern School. It was somebody with a back, with a claw and stuff like this. Twelve thirty in the morning, Sunday night, busy clearing. So I wonder if we do that? Them hours.
Yeah, I don't know if we have those hours. I think they get here like about five thirty, six. They do plan, they generally get here in time, they'll take care of it, you know.
Yeah, I would just surprise to see them.
Yeah, I'm surprised to hear that too. I didn't realize that, maybe it was contracted.
I think you guys contract owner, huh? Or.
We have a crew that, within the district that.
Yeah, we're district employees there.
Yeah, some of the outline schools, anywhere.
Northern and Saltway maybe.
Indian Ed report, baseline assessment of teachers' integration of language and culture into core curriculum is done. Doctor Genu Dischuk attended the regional Indian Ed Directors Meeting. He submitted the American Indian Education Aid Grant application. He and his team have distributed a new set of children's non-abusive books to parents and teachers during conferences, working on a Jibway History Student Podcast. Uh, they've had professional development of all staff on the history of Red Lake by now, and have done Red Willow Kinnick demonstrations with students, and Ojibwe Rosetta Stone subscriptions have been purchased for language teachers. A lot's going on grad department. Over in Nema, on December ninth, that was the day that we had that Sun Clans training here. They have staff development up there on their own training. Nema staff participated in a presentation on adult and student mental health and strategies to work through those instances appropriately. They also have Rebecca Swanson in Nema training staff on how to effectively use Aptegen, which is a communication software. On December twelfth, Nema hosted an annual make and take for parents and guardians. They've been invited to participate with their children on these crafting opportunities. Their light snack was served during the event. Then on December thirteenth, all of the students up there have the opportunity to pick out a gift for one of their family members for Christmas. The staff brought in items that were appropriate for adults and for children, and for the children to choose from, so they would have an additional opportunity to participate in the given aspect of Christmas, I know that. My wife and I gathered a few items and contributed, and a lot of people did the same thing. Over here, the Red Lake Elementary Complex report, on the P K through two level, grades K through twelve went to Headwater Science Center, and on the sixth, the kindergarten went, the sixth of December, on the seventh, the first grade and special ed went, and on the eighth of December, the second grade went. Had a great time and a lot of positive comments from the science center about how our students behaved during the field trip. The professional development on December ninth went well, and our staff over there were very thankful for the additional time for those training opportunities. Then over at the three and five, their professional development day was on the ninth well, and they had offerings included self-regulation, de-escalation techniques, training on rooms, assessment, intervention, time management, sixteen habits of mind, Ojibwe language and culture, and math training. And you can see that chart there, the Red Lake Elementary Complex attendance, and it's really more the enrollment is really what the word should say there, and you can see that they're up fifty-eight. Nice change just since September sixth. When we had five hundred and seventy-one, now we're at six twenty-nine. So our numbers continue to rise and stay expanding. You'll see that when we get through the report from the secondary complex, which is next, in the next page.
Well, a quick question, what is sixteen habits of mind?
You know, I'm not completely familiar with that, but I believe it has to do with ways that we're trying to train students to think and to be present and to be having attitudes related to commitment and respect and that kind of thing. But I, I think that's a very poor description, though, something along the lines. The middle school is implementing some new strategies to curb negative student behaviors. Art therapy, positive behavioral rewards, and celebrating and encouraging students using Seven Grandfather gifts or teachings. And the middle school has incorporated a weekly ceremony to reinforce cultural teachings and expectations. Then taking a look at high school enrollment, you can see that, first of all, before we get to that, fifteen students signed up to take the A C T exams on December tenth, the Saturday. Then we can take a look at enrollment, and this is really encouraging, where our enrollment is at seven twenty-seven. We'll see some more numbers on that later, but then the attendance, the next column there shows our attendance up till the end of November this year, seventy-seven percent compared to where we were at at this time last year, only forty-nine percent. So to me, that's some more really good news, that our students are in school a whole lot more than they were last year. So more than fifty percent increase. So that's telling a good story right there. Then on the next page, update on graduation information. Mostly I want to focus on the second chart, part chart there on page ten, the bottom of half the page. This is all of our seniors in the high school. And on the right, you can see that forty-one percent of the students are on track, which is really encouraging. In the past, we've had fewer, but another eleven percent need a little bit of extra support because they have about ten credits to go on before they graduate, so that might mean some credit recovery and additional help. And then on the left, another thirty-six percent will need not only more support, but some additional time, which might mean some summer school. But if they stick with it, they should be able to graduate. So this is encouraging. I sure would like to see more than forty-one percent or fifty-two percent graduating. So it's nice to keep track of these numbers because we can not have, you know, we won't have any surprise. A month to month, we're tracking students and making sure they know how many credits they still have left to graduate. If you look at the next page, those are the A L C students. Reason they're in A L C is because they've been struggling. And there, we only have eighteen percent of those students who are on track. Another eight percent need more credits. Fifty-eight percent need more credits and additional time, like an evening or summer school. That's a bit more of a challenge, but they could come a long way between now and graduation if they stayed in track. So that's the report on the secondary complex, and then I just have for report in the consolidated report, and that's from the, from Nolan, the activities and athletic director coordinator. He wants to point out the following, a list of events and activities taking place recently. Boys and girls basketball teams are playing games and staying eligible with our current policy of C minus or better, flat. Nolan is helping with little league basketball program for age two, three, four, and five, boys and girls. Been busy coordinating community ed roller skating events, and has set up a basketball journey, the Alfred P D Thomas forty and over tournament. So all of us can be part of that if we want to. Especially if we had our eyes fixed. Shoot better now.
Yeah, good friend, that was P D Thomas.
Yeah. And then the last part of, that's two parts of my report, is a memo that summarizes Nolan's thoughts after our last board meeting on the activities eligibility policy. He wanted really make sure we're clarifying why we're doing what we're doing and where we're at. The current activities eligibility policy is one that I developed fifteen years ago, or he developed. A very good policy that holds students accountable. It should not be replaced or modified by a policy that is less demanding or rigorous because every student athlete is capable of maintaining grades that will ensure eligibility as long as they put forth a solid effort. His vision for the current policy was developed by focusing on the fact that I S D thirty-eight is first and foremost a school. For this reason, academic goals and achievements should be placed first and given priority over eligibility on a team's tour or activity. Our goal should not be field, building a team, but developing a team of participants who are good. Over the years, the current policy has been in place. We've had college recruiters take an interest in our athletes. Colleges are interested in athletes who will succeed in the robust environments of academic institutions.
Okay.
If we lower the academic bar of the eligibility policy, we're doing our students a huge disservice. Anytime expectations are diminished, we discover that performance also diminishes. Nolan wants to hold our teams and our athletes to the levels of expectation that encourages discipline, focus, and success, so that college recruiters are attracted to our students and so that our students are better prepared to succeed in their post-secondary pursuits. Current eligibility policy according to Nolan should not be changed. That makes sense, and the good news is that one week after we had that, the first issue with some students not being eligible, a couple of parents called in, week after, every student on our team, according to Nolan, was once again eligible. They got the message. You guys need to be in class, you need to work on your homework.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, yeah. And what Nolan told me is we've had a real good history of colleges reaching out, wanting our students. And on a more personal note, one of the worst things you can do when it comes to the people like me, Saganashi, European, white people, looking at students of color, is to say, ah, these are students of color, these African, African kids, they can't do this, I'm not gonna expect that of them. Summer lives life. Native kids, they can't do it. Let's just forget about it. That's an insidious and terrible way to let implicit bias sneak into our schools and to say, oh, because their students are colored, they can't do as good or as well as the majority students, the late students, you know. And you see that happen with Hispanic kids. It's the white kids and the Asian kids, where everybody thinks they're gonna do it. I know our kids can do as well, you know.
Yeah, that book called Spark.
Yep.
Where, you're familiar with that. That's where the study was done in Naperville, Illinois. That's a well-to-do school district. Then there was another, another study done in Philadelphia, I don't know what school district, but the same results.
And of all the programs and initiatives that school do that lead to success, one of the best is holding students to high expectations. And then holding ourselves as educators, same. Then I wanted to move on, you guys had a question on our weather-related closings, and I would, at this point, direct you to page thirteen in my overall report, and it would be that would be in board book two. We have a policy that calls for temperatures, if it's at five in the morning, temperatures are thirty-five below, we do a two-hour lead start. At seven, if there's still two hours, or still thirty-five degrees below, we cancel the day. Same is true for blizzard conditions, five o'clock, we take a look. It's hard for visibility, we call two hours late, see if we can buy some time for things to clear up and for some daylight to enter the picture. If it's still under blizzard conditions at seven, we cancel the day. Or go into E-Day now, which is really nice to have. If it's a matter of snow accumulation like we had last week, we go two hours late first, and again, we cancel by seven. We pretty much did that last week. What I did was reached out to a number of schools and asked what they've got in their policies. In places I got responses from, the great majority, majority of them said that when it comes to snow or blizzard and visibility, pretty much the same kind of thing we do. But when it comes to wind chill, temperatures, they don't necessarily have a specific temperature. We've got thirty-five below. When I was in permission, we didn't have one in policy, but in practice, it was about forty below. So we'll use that as a benchmark, but it wasn't policy. What most of the districts who responded to me said was, they look at the situation, and if it's, whether it's wind chill. if it's, whether it's wind chill or just ambient cold temperatures, they look at the size of the district, they look at whether or not buses can get going. In Vermigie, we often hear about a late start, but it's because they can't, they don't have a bus garage. Their buses are all outside, not even much plugged in, but still, they struggle to get them all going. And they need the extra two hours to get them warmed up. They do batteries in, get them started. But when they do have either a policy or a practice, it's around forty below. Ours is thirty-five below, which is actually, you know, a little bit more cautious, if you will. I think that's still good. You know, I would recommend we definitely not go backwards to forty. But I don't think the need to up it to thirty, you know, change it because the irony is, is people look at maybe moving to more like thirty or canceling school more easily. We're doing it at a time when we have better services like cell phones and radios than buses. And we have buses that run better than we had ten, twenty, thirty years ago. So generally, we can get kids to school. If a parent is not comfortable sending a child to school, they're certainly welcome to keep their child at home. And the other thing is that when we have, uh, a snow day and we keep kids at home, in many ways, we noticed this in Vermigie too, it's less safe for kids if they're not in school in a warm building, under supervision, being fed. They're at home by themselves, they could get get hurt and in trouble. The other irony about this is that when it's very cold, let's say thirty-five or forty below at five in the morning, so we delay school two hours. Everyone happy by seven o'clock, I mean, kids are out there for the late bus or eight, seven thirty, it's even colder. It seems to get even colder at eight o'clock than it is at six o'clock. So I, I think our policy is still very solid. And, uh, I think that if we have a very, very, I'm glad we don't have school this week, you know how cold it is, but if we have in January, obviously, we'll have more very cold days.
Yeah.
And I think one of the things I want, mine guaranteed is if we do have school, you're not comfortable, keep your child at home. But please rest them well if you do send them. I see a lot of kids showing up in flip flops, even now, in shorts, no gloves. Please make sure to rest your child. Any questions?
Yeah, just one here. Just read that last one, you know, call a school and then excuse a student.
Even the very, uh,
the last one.
Parent discretion.
Yeah.
Yeah. The district uses the best information available to weather-related, make weather-related decisions. The district recognizes that parents have that discretion. Keep their students home if they deem the weather conditions unsafe. Parents are reminded that if they exercise this option, they must call their students' school to excuse students. We know that they're on top of things. So parents always get the final call. Now, within Vermigie, we'd almost always get a call if we didn't cancel school. They never make anybody, everybody happy. And they would call and say, why did you have school today? Well, because we have our buses running and you believe it's, they do so and believe it's better to have kids in school. If you don't want your child in school, you don't have school standards.
It's a lot with heaters, uh, buses still aren't that good. I mean, I, I guess from what I heard from last night, um, it was pretty cold in the, the boys' bus.
Hmm.
And they went on their, um.
Renada?
Yeah.
That was a specific bus then, he says, most of the heaters generally when they're working, they're good, but, oh.
Yeah. I can look into that. Oh, one of those, one of those bus drivers said that there's a certain one that those new ones have, they don't work as good as the old heaters.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I don't know.
Well, I'm looking forward to our electric school buses. Of course, that range wouldn't be enough to make a dog, but we get electricity.
How many did we get, two of them?
Two of them. The thing about electric vehicles is you got instant heat. I've got two electric vehicles at home. You get in the car and it's, you don't have to wait for the internet heat to get heat, it's hot, I know.
When you have your heat on high or whatever, an electric car, does it kind of drain your battery though?
It does take battery down a little bit, yeah. I mean, not enough to ruin the trip. Same is true in the summer with air conditioning.
So what's your mileage on a full charge? Three hundred?
On one vehicle, three hundred and ten, and on the other one, about two sixty. Yep, so we can go quite a way. I like not.
Then what's your backup if the battery goes dead?
My wife pushes the car.
You don't got, oh, they're in a hybrid, you don't have gas backup?
We used to have a hybrid because that was, you know, for range anxiety or nervousness about getting there. But we never had trouble, just plan ahead and it's kind of, kind of fun not having to buy gas. Get out in the cold like a.
So when you pull over and charge those things, how long you gotta wait then?
Depends on the car and the kind of charger, but.
You want to pay for that though, don't you?
What's that?
You got to pay for that.
A lot of places have free, free electric.
Recharging?
Yeah. Yep. Those are, those are the slower ones though, so you gotta wait a little longer, but we plan our lunches around there. We take a lunch break and charge your car. All right, so.
Yeah, just a quick, just a quick comment. Truck driver video station. Listening to them, they were talking about this issue here for electric, but electric trucks and stuff and electric vehicles. In about three years' time, there's going to be a whole bunch. Well, right there, he's got two of them.
Yeah.
There's going to be a whole bunch of electric vehicles. And what, what they're figuring out is, you know, there won't hardly be any gas stations. So where is the money going to come from for maintenance of the roads and stuff like that? Yeah, so.
So one day or another, it's going to come to where we have to put them at our schools so the teachers can charge their car? Or is that a policy or do we got to pay for that or what?
I, you know, we don't provide gas for people, so I don't know why we have to provide charge for them.
All right.
But it would be a nice way to lead the way at the same time, to say, hey, you know, I'm trying to encourage you to buy an electric car. But, um, I don't think we'll have to do that.
All right.
But to answer your question, I get when we do our license tab, we get an extra electric vehicle surcharge. We have to pay what maybe would have been part of the estimated taxes in the built-in of the gallons of gas. So we, we pay a couple hundred or more this time we buy a tag, tabs for a license and that except for the lost.
How many chargers they got at the government center now?
Got two at the college and two at the government center. And I only ever see one other person there, and that's Ashley, she's got one.
Well.
Lots of, uh, no competition for that, and they're free. So.
I do believe that, uh, we are paying for people's gas and we're paying them mileage.
Well, that's true. Good point. Yep, when they go on special trips, correct? Yep. For not to come to work, just for special meetings and trips, conferences, things like that. Anyway, sorry, I got you off on a tangent there.
Well, that's on, that's down the road.
You got roy, royled up there.
All right, that's my report. Um, actually, there's one more report while we're on reports, and that's the enrollment report. And for the enrollments report, I would direct you to page fifteen in your board book. And that's where I mentioned earlier that our numbers are, you can see our numbers are holding very firm. Um, beginning of this year and most of last year, we were getting concerned about our drops in enrollment. We're coming back. You look at the last three columns. Middle of October of this fall, October thirteenth of twenty twenty-two, we have fifteen hundred and twenty-one overall students. The next month, we get game twenty-one students. Probably the charter school more than likely is most of that source. Now, just a week ago, we were up another twelve students. So that's net gains. We might lose a few students here and there, but we're getting much, many more coming in.
So are this me for, for next fall sports? We're going to stay in two-way or are we going to finally go back to A?
The question. Yeah, I don't know. I think it depends upon, what they often look at is October first numbers, and those numbers were a little bit lower, so it may still be based on lower numbers, so.
So then you have to, uh, each by only through our enrollment, like two twenty or twenty-four?
Is that nine, two, twelve, or what?
Yeah. Four, nine, two, twelve.
Yeah, I don't know what to do, you know?
Yep, those were nine. No, that's my report.
Hey, uh, consent agenda then, people there. Today, December.
Yeah, we've got ten items, you know, some months we have fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, but the, uh, they're all pretty basic. Eight hires to approve, some list update to approve, and of course, the, uh, third, first item on there is the minutes from the last meeting. So I present all of those in the consent agenda for your approval.
Number G, Tyrone Thunder.
Student.
Yeah. Don't remember right, he was in Kellyer for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe he had a sister.
That's two sisters, huh? They have two sisters, huh?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, they were both in there.
Oh, I made the most of it. Okay. I made most of it. Remember that.
Approved, right?
Yeah.
Did he start again, Roy?
Yeah.
Roy did?
Yeah.
Well, okay. Second by Nelson. Approve the consent agenda. Further discussion. There none, although Thursday I.
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 You voting, Rob?
I don't know. Consent agenda.
Okay. We don't have no need for a co-op session.
You say five or zero.
Ah.
Five, four.
Five, four. Action I, we have approved building layers for a month of November two thousand twenty-two.
So on page one seventy-six of your board book.
An amount of two point nine, two and five million, five hundred thousand nine, et cetera.
Yep, just that one question, it was on, I talked to William. Page thirty-two. By the way, there was a, once a check number, it's just all blank for twenty pages.
Big throws of the lighters in my.
Then they started.
Yeah. Page thirty-two?
Yeah. The one with, um, who was Robert Lydell, Red Lake Trading Post, Menards Target, Illinois, Creek. Them were homeless students who we help out and comes from the homeless grant. That was the only question I had.
Oh, what, the one, uh, that, uh, Lydell Roberts one name? Yeah, I was kind of curious about that too, I thought that was a reimbursement.
Well, it's, um, purchases, Jim. Uh, hats, gloves, something like that.
Yeah.
That was the only question I had.
And then the other one. Motion on that one?
Yeah, if there's no, uh, other questions, I'll move.
Motion by Nelson. Approved.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Ferman. Further discussion. There none, although Thursday I.
Right.
I oppose. Five, four. Hey, certified two twenty-two pay, two twenty-three property tax levy.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the things that I appreciate about working in this district is that we have probably the lowest levy in the state. A little over six thousand dollars. And, uh, it's, one of the things too that's nice about this is that so much of our funding comes to us from state and the federal government. When it comes to per pupil, adjusted pupil unit, uh, funding, we are way above the average cross-state fee if we get the funding coming our way. But when it comes to resident pupil, uh, referendum value, we're quite a bit lower because we generally don't do taxes, you know, taxation in the red light nation. We, uh, the median district or the average district in terms of operating referendum revenue is about four hundred and ninety-two dollars per student. We're up there at one thousand eight hundred and forty credo per student for adjustment pupil unit. So we're, uh, and a lot of districts get, ninety-four districts get nothing, they don't have any operating referendum. But we get a really sweet, sweet feel this way when we're getting money from other sources. And all we need to do is levy a little over six thousand dollars. So if you were to take a look at the very first item in Board Book, the levy calculation, which I believe in your board book is, uh, page two sixteen in that area, two seventeen.
Yeah.
That's where you can see from the the list that Willie put together in the bottom right-hand corner, that number six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, seventeen cents. And if we, if we present this at board meeting, approve that levy, that's the maximum levy. And I always recommend to boards that we rec prove the maximum levy because then we can always decide to go backwards. That's what we did about four months ago. We set the maximum levy, now we're, we proposed it back then, now we're approving. Keeping it at what we had first proposed three or four months ago, so. So I present to you, um, for your action this afternoon, the certified twenty twenty-two pay twenty twenty-three property tax levy at six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, seventeen cents.
All move. Go approve.
By Nelson.
Okay.
Second by Dejarle. Approve property tax levy. Further discussion. There none, although Thursday I.
I.
I oppose a acceptance of secondary school boiler replacement project bid.
Okay.
An amount of two million, two point three million.
Around two eighty-eight in your board book. Yeah. Something I've been working on as a board now for a couple of months, and you're aware of it. I read a letter written to, uh, by Whitsett, this to Willie. Dear Mr. Larson, pursuant to the authority of Red Lake School number thirty-eight, bid or receive for the reference project, ten AM in the district offices in Red Lake on December thirteenth. That's an indication that we did take in two bids. Field bid on December thirteenth, a week ago. They came in, one of them was from Shannon's Inc., and the other one was from Eagle Construction. They came in, one of them was from Shannon's Inc., and the other one was from Eagle Construction. Following a phone conversation with Shannon Construction, which was the lower bid, they confirmed that they were comfortable with their bid and they had no issues moving forward. Based on the bid received, Whitsett recommends awarding the base bid and the alternate number one to Shannon's Inc., which is the lowest responsible bidder. Now, if you look at the next item in board book, um, that's the bid abstract that charted there showing the two bids that came in. You can see that Eagle Construction came in at two point one seven one million, two million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand. And then for the air handling unit replacement, it was another one million fifty-five thousand dollars. Shannon's, the lower bid, came in at only one million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And their air handled unit replacement bid was nine hundred thousand plus change. So combined, they are not much more than the base bid from Eagle. So you can see there that Shannon's is quite a bit lower. Then, if you take a look at the third item, this is a memo from me summarizing the whole process. Some of it's history now, some of it's still coming, moving forward, but if you remember at the July school board meeting, my first one with you guys, you approved the ten-year-long, long-term facilities maintenance plan as required by the M D E. Included in the July plan was the replacement of this nineteen fifty-seven boiler in the secondary complex. District worked with architects and engineers from W S N, developed the request for proposals. You'll find the details below. So estimated cost of the project, two point two three million dollars. Funding available, capital reserve, we have a little over a million. Fiscal year twenty-three, capital aid, three hundred thousand, L T F M reserve, fifty-one thousand or change. Fiscal year twenty-four, L T F M aid is five hundred and eighty-five thousand. And you can see the rest going down for total available funding, two million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, which is more than we need. So we're in good coverage here. And the project timeline, of course, we have the bidding between November twenty-first and December eighth, bids were open on the eighth, bids awarded today at this meeting. Contracts will be issued January fourth. Contractors will then place, uh, their supply and equipment orders in January, well in advance of the work. It's going to take a lot of lead time to get everything here. Project will start June fifth, project completion August fifteenth. So barely gotten dry, process has taken six months. We're at the point now where I present to you the, the bid and recommendations to accept the bid from Shannon's as the lowest responsible bidder for the secondary school boiler replacement project. Thank you.
Are there going to be any employment for, uh, people in, uh, here? Like, um, Carol or what? Do you have a plan?
I don't know the answer to that. There are probably going to be, you know, some employ, or some initial time amongst, um, our custodians, that's the next, already there's some work there, but that's just, um, tertiary stuff that's been around the edge of the block. But I don't know.
Like, Tarot or something.
Yeah, if there's any, um, like labors or whatever that needs to be hired, if we get some of our people in the community to get some work.
I think whenever that's possible, that's desirable, and that's something I like to see. Yeah, I will bring that up with Willie and Chris and W S N, I'm sure they talk that, make that recommendation.
Check with, uh, Gary Loud and stuff too at.
Yes. Lot of their, you know, welders and other construction designers, you know, could use the work.
Okay. Certain percent that may be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Federal law.
Yeah.
Of course, prevailing wages would be part of the year too.
They want to vote on that, or should we, you want to wait? Should we wait? I don't know.
If you go.
I think that's an all we've done, we later don't align.
Then.
And I would recommend we vote because we need to, uh,
Need to get this.
The longer we wait, that could affect the bids, you know, and it could affect the ordering timeline.
Not if you guys, however, you want to do a new motion here.
All move.
Motion by Nelson to approve.
They're always considered in the.
They are?
Two percent.
That's right, boy.
Oh, yeah.
No, they don't need to be, uh, in letter, it's, it's in the agreement. Well, it's in the agreement, okay, but they have to provide two percent of that cost.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, I'm claiming to approve two point three million, Shannon's lowest responsible bidder for the boiler. Further discussion. There none, all of Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
They got twenty people working there and you get two percent, but then hire one person.
Yeah, that's what, I have to go on.
Doesn't mean we have to limit it at that, that's just the required gentleman, but we could certainly do more.
Okay. Item D, uh, proof terms, should we do this all with one, or should we want to do these individually?
We vote on this seat?
On what?
If we vote on this seat, five more.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not staying on that.
Okay, four, zero, one.
More definitive answers on that.
Okay.
Chair, I would recommend, since this has to do with employment, that we do treat each one differently, but we can move them quickly one after the other because they're all the same situation. We have to be careful here that we don't mention any names, because this is a public meeting. But these three employees are all, um, employees who are probationary. They are employees who have been, for the most part, not showing up to work anymore. They have been offered an opportunity to resign instead of being terminated, they chose not to. For the most part, they have been unresponsive to other questions that we've had, so. I have before you today, uh, the first item, nine E, the, to approve the termination of employment with employee known as twenty twenty-two E, effective December twenty-first. And, uh, we'll see that item on page three eleven of board book. Be mindful again, not to mention any names. Again, pretty much, um, M I A workers. Recommend termination of this employer so we can replace this person or this employee, so we can replace this employee for someone who will be here.
And the motion on the item D then? Two oh twenty-two D.
You got to do them individually?
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, all move.
Motion by Nelson.
Termination.
Okay.
Remember my very first. We terminated Red Lake when, three years. He's doing, he's doing good today.
Seconded yet?
I'll second it.
Seconded by permanent. Motion by Nelson, seconded by permanent, terminate employee two oh twenty-two D. Further discussion. There none, all of Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Same.
Page five, zero, one, oh, four, zero, one? Yes. Four, zero, one. Hey, approve termination of employment with employee two oh twenty-two E.
Again, it's the same exact situation, no need to go into the details again, but M I A, not showing up to work. Or recommend termination of twenty twenty-two E.
All move to approve.
Motion by Nelson.
Rob, Rob's thinking about it, right? Question somebody has?
We have one motion on the table.
We had a white house at one time, remember that?
You know it?
Hmm.
What's that?
We had a white house at one time.
I don't remember that.
It's just right over here, that's where we used that.
I'll second on this one then.
Okay.
Now, motion by Nelson, seconded by Bear, to terminate employment, employee two oh two two E. Further discussion. There none, all of Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Post. Same. Five oh? Five zero. Okay, approve termination of employment of employee two oh twenty-two F.
Two F is again, a no show, and I recommend termination so we can find a replacement for somebody who will be here.
All move again to approve.
Motion by Nelson. Seconded by DeJarly. Hey, I'm motioned by Nelson, seconded by DeJarly, to terminate employee two oh twenty-two F. Further discussion. There none, all of Thursday, aye.
Aye.
Post. Five zero. Five zero. Hey, uh, first reading of two oh twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar.
Hey, this is where it always feels like time is flying by, nobody looking at next year. Busy, but, uh, for this, I would refer you to a couple different pages in the board book. One of them would be, uh, well, basically thirty-five is where it begins, and a important thing of the day counts, whenever we put together a calendar, we want to make sure that we're meeting the requirements, both statutory requirements and requirements in all of our master agreements. So take a look at the day counts page. We have three contract days in August, those are staff development days, back-to-school days, and throughout the next rest of the year, all the months that follow, we have all the days listed for a total of one hundred and seventy-one contract days, one hundred and sixty-five student days. And then we have the summer school calendar, which is something that could be changed or could be lengthened down the road depending upon funding, but we have that set in place too. With the minimum that we always need to have is covered here, we're meeting the master agreements, one hundred and seventy-one teacher and staff days, one hundred and sixty-five student days. So now that we have that established, if you want to take a look at the actual calendar itself, this is in your board book, it is color-coded, and it has notes on the right-hand side, which explain a few things. The most important part though is towards the bottom where you see where the quarters end and how many days are in each quarter. Always good to have quarters that are kind of equal. First quarter has an ending date of November third, it's forty days long, second quarter ends January nineteenth, it's forty-three days long. The first semester is eighty-three days. Third quarter is ending on March twenty-first, it's forty-one days, and then fourth quarter, May twenty-second, forty-one days, with calendar eighty-two days. The first semester, eighty-three days, second semester, eighty-two days. And that's important that we try to keep them somewhat equal in case we have students taking a class for a semester or a second semester, that they're relatively the same. One thing that'll be different next year is that on Mondays right now, we have two-hour-long professional learning time, T L Ts, we're reducing them down to ninety minutes. Because if we're more efficient, we'll be able to come with much the same in the ninety minutes and give students another thirty minutes a day of learning time. Over the course of a hundred and sixty-five days, that's another eighty hours of, of, uh, educational time for these students, and eighty hours equivalent to a little more than ten days of education. So I think that's important to do, especially when we're pretty much meeting the minimum number of hours as it is. We have shortened, the last thing I want to point out is we've shortened the holiday break a little bit. You know, this year was two full weeks plus three weekends. That's a long time to be away, most schools in the area go till today or till Thursday. We've placed those days elsewhere in the calendars where we often find a lot of students are missing. So if you take a look at the month of March, those three dates in red, March fifteenth is the girls' state tournament, March twenty-second, the boys' state tournament, we lose a lot of students those days, so why have school? And then the twenty-ninth is Good Friday, which is better. We also have a new date that's an non-school day, and that's the twelveth of February. That is Super Bowl Monday, where we also end up with a lot of people gone, because of the nineteen. So.
Minnesota Vikings.
No, that's all, I need, I need Mondays off every time the Vikings play anyway, so it goes through a range of motions. I'm thankful they were on Saturday, and they'll be on Saturday this year, this week. But the other thing that's a change, we've added, uh, in November, Staff Development Day, which is on November first, which is also day after Halloween, when we often have students, either gone because they've had too much candy, not feeling well, or they're high. Or they're hyped up on sugar, and we often have issues, so we thought that would be a good day. For middle of the year. Or middle of the quarter, it is a staff development day. For those of the changes. Last day of school, May twenty-second, last staff day, May twenty-third. This is the first of two readings, so I present to you today the first reading of the calendar for next year.
There's no action squares on that, I guess.
No, no, no.
We done? Anybody else on this plan yet?
Yeah, I got something on this line here, also.
We have to, we have to vote on this first though. Sorry.
Oh, wait.
Action on this?
Well, that's right.
I just got that reading.
I'm used to voting on other districts. Okay, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, so last month, we, we had. I brought up the activity, eligibility policy. Like that, right? So, when we had the meeting. We discussed at the meeting that we will go back to Minnesota State High School eligibility. Asked at that meeting, did we need to vote on this, or how do we handle? And we were told that it would be taken care of by the superintendent. So then, I was getting calls from coaches and parents about, Rob, I thought you went back on the eligibility policy, I said, yeah, I told people too, and everything, this stuff didn't figure out what's going on. So, in the meantime, I'm like, well, and I called. Uh, Mr. Lutz about it, and. It was like. No, I talked with, uh. I talked with the staff or whoever we talked with, and we decided that we're gonna keep it the same, with no change. And I'm like, well, the board. You know, that was something that we. Discussed, and, and, you know. And I had Mike on the phone at the time, and Mike was like. Mr. Lutz, I'm, I'm asking Mr. Lutz, you know, what's going on? He said he discussed it with Mike. Mike's like, I didn't discuss anything. And that, that's the stuff that we've been having issues with, I think they, we make a board decision.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there.
No, 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 let me finish, this is my last time on the board anyway, so it ain't gonna make a difference anyway. But I think what happens is, is when we come to these board meetings and we do this stuff, and we direct our superintendents to do stuff. Then you go behind us and talk with whoever you talk to, and I, I'm not blaming you, Mike, but. Mike is not the board. And, and, and that's, that's all I'm gonna say, Mike is not the board, you got an issue with it. You could have called a special meeting and brought the board in and discussed this with them. Versus doing what, what's been going on. Then I'm told, well, we want to hold kids accountable. The ones that are being held, and this is what ticks me off, is the ones that are being held accountable. Are mainly the athletes, the ones that are outside trying, the ones who need to be held accountable, they ain't involved in sports, they're not involved in extracurricular activities. So it's almost like a double standard. And I know our principals on, on the, on the team meeting here. I just wanted to say, you know. And then like reading this, this memo that came out, I know for a fact. That this wasn't developed no fifteen years ago. Because I was the one, I was one of the people who pushed the policy through. And I know it wasn't fifteen years ago. That, that, this policy didn't come about, and so after I first got on the board. So that's the stuff like I don't like, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I'm, I'm done after this is my last meeting, but. You guys really need to pay attention of what's going on and what's being said to us. You know? I, I actually, because that. This blew my mind, and I'm like, there's, there's no way. This stuff didn't happen until after I got on the board, the first time I got on the board. We discussed that policy, I mean, and that's, that's the part where. You know, I, I just don't like the. I, I, you know, and it's not personal, but it is too. Because it's like every time, we, I mean, we, we've asked former superintendents to do the same stuff. So I don't know if it's. Who's making, who's changing these decisions that the board makes, but. Guys need to, you know, watch and, and pay attention to what's going on, and, and that's it, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Uh, who needs to pay attention is everyone, not one thing that decided at the last board meeting. You talked about.
It wasn't decided at the last board, you said, I asked, do we need to vote on this? You said, don't worry about it, if this is what the board wishes, I'll take care of it.
You're saying I said that?
Yeah. Look at the minutes.
What I said was, I will look into it. And I did look into it, and I got the answers, and then I called Mike, I didn't have a board discussion with Mike. I told Mike, as the board chair, here's what I found out. At the January board meeting. This discussion came up, because you had a policy you changed because of COVID. And you, you made the policy so that it was easier for students to stay eligible because of COVID. Because a lot of students were not in school. That policy was to expire at the end of the school year, which it did. Now, in January. Some of you were talking about, should we continue this? And make it a policy that's permanent? So that takes place, policy decisions that are changed take place in the summer with the policy committee. And nobody at the policy committee brought it up. So the policy that you had last year expired with the end of the school year. So when I said I would look into it, that's what I discovered, and I told Mike that. We are starting a new school year under a new policy, which is what we have had for roughly fifteen, maybe it was twelve, maybe thirteen years, Nolan believes it was fifteen. But I made no promises to continue the policy. That we had last year. When parents call you, you need to remember what you learned at phase one and phase two training with MSBA. And that is to tell parents to call the principals, to call the A V.
And I did. And then I get principals' call.
And the principals didn't appreciate being accused of not following the policy because they were. We have a policy that has gone back to the previous policy, which we've had for over a decade. And we have found out that, as I explained to people here before you came, all of the students. That, that next week got back on track. And we're eligible to play. When we hold students accountable, there's no double edged sword, we hold all students accountable. They perform and they live up to it. That's why.
Well, regardless, we're gonna agree to disagree, because I know what we were told at that board meeting. And like I said, you can't then. You know, it, it, it's, that's what I'm saying, Mike. Mike was on the phone. I asked Mike, did you? Mike said, and was like. Why do you talk to me about anything, Rob? So. There we go, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just going like, like I said. I did law, I did law enforcement for twenty something years, I'm not gonna put something in somebody's mouth, and I'm not gonna lie to somebody, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that thing. I'm not, I'm, I'm just not.
When you asked Mike, he probably thought you were saying, did someone call you about changing the policy?
No.
And I never did, I called him and I said, here's what I've learned. Here's what happened at the January board meeting.
What, what we told at that meeting in November, Mike? You sat here and you, you were here with me, because Tom Barrett came in and asked about the same stuffs. And we said, we just discussed it, Mr. Lutz is gonna take care of it. Oh, okay. And he left. Then I get a call from him, I get a call from. The principals, and I'm like, well. I don't know. Like I said, I'm not gonna lie for nobody, I'm not gonna put my credibility out there and, and make it seem like it's something that it's not. That, that's bottom line, I'm not gonna do it, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here, you know, and then. You know, it, it's just, it's just ongoing, it is just too many. You know, and I don't like common people, I, I don't, I, I, I don't call people lies. But there's a lot of untruths not. That are being told.
I have heard you numerous times throwing my predecessor under the bus.
Throwing your predecessors under the bus, because of the same, that was because of the same issue. That was the same issue that happened.
I would contend that you're hearing things differently. I did not say I was going to continue this policy.
Oh, my God.
I said I would look into it. And I told you on the phone. That I stand by that, and that when we meet again, at this meeting, I would continue to stand by this.
Okay.
The policy was changed for last year, it expired. I would look into it, find out what the deal was, and I did, and I called my executive board chair and explained it to him. And that's as far as it got, and that's as far as I promised it would go. Now you as a board can change the policy if you'd like. But your own policy says you change policies in the summertime with the policy committee.
Not necessarily. We don't have to wait till.
No, you don't have to wait, you can, you're the board, and you can make a change. But your policy generally says that when you make your changes.
By, by Nolan's letter here, I thought everything was okay with everything.
It is. Kids are staying.
By, by what he wrote, I don't know.
Deserve staying on track. And we all have this discussion before Rob, God, and Mr. McLean got here, we need to hold the kids accountable, and when we do, they rise to the occasion. We have, you had this policy last year because of COVID, because kids were often gone, they weren't in contact with their teachers. We don't need that anymore, we're here, and you've seen the numbers, you've seen the attendance rates of kids. They're here in school. And they can all achieve. And be eligible. And they've shown it, because right after that week, they got back on board.
Is it the eligibility concerning the junior high most mainly, or?
Across the board. Across the board.
Through the high school team and all that.
And this is one of the last tools we have for teachers. To hold kids accountable. Is eligibility. We're starting a brand new esports team, we have a beautiful new computer lab, ready to go. It'll apply to them as well. We want students who are achieving. To attract college recruiters. And as Nolan said, I don't just want to feel the team. I want a team full of students who are good students, who will succeed in post-secondary life, especially if they're recruited to go to college and play sports. So I don't appreciate being, you know, the innuendo that I'm not telling the truth.
I know what I heard. And if somebody else heard what you said, then I'm, I'm totally out of bounds. But I'm pretty sure I know what I heard, because I asked if we should vote on. That's, that's the number one thing, I, I, not trying, like I said, I'm not. Same thing like this memo too. Not, I, I'm a researcher. And little do you know, I just got off the phone with Nolan, all he did was his board report, that's it. That's what he just told me on the phone.
Mm-hmm. He?
He didn't do no memo, he, he said, I did not do a memo. Last minute.
And I sat down.
Alright, okay.
And we put that memo together, and I said, is this where you stand? I can put, I can put it in words for you if you'd like. He said, yeah. And that's what I said earlier. This is presented from his perspective, here's where his thoughts are.
Okay, he read it and then agreed to this?
Mm-hmm. I put it in words.
You know, your predecessor did. He used to stay on quite a, quite a bit of stuff, you know, that she was circumventing what the policy, the board was on. On the board's back, you know, that's where the distrust came from. It was hard to find, bro. He wasn't doing what we were. Telling her to do, you know, he was at a big, um, he was forgetting that the school board was her boss, instead of her being the boss of the school board.
Okay.
That, that was the, that was what I got from it, you know, and that was why I. I didn't, I didn't trust it come along to the end, you know. You know, I think that was. Hardly to do it. With a lot of the community input too, and people in the community. If they seem to do that too.
Yep.
Were involved in this.
And what, and, and what she said, I ain't never said anything negative about, I just said there were certain things that we asked that didn't happen. And it didn't. I asked about a lunch count for. Six months. And every month I asked, it was, I'll look into it, I'll look into it, I'll look into it, I'll look into it. And then March comes around and it's like, oh, by the way, this did happen. Well. How come we couldn't have got that answer when I very first asked, so we could get an address?
Mm-hmm.
That's the stuff that I'm talking about, it's nothing about. You know. Wash my hands of that. But when I hear stuff, because every time it's the same. Would ask for information, all of us would ask for different information, and it was the same thing. I'll look into it, no report back the following month, we'll ask about it, no report back, I'll have to look into it. Too much down the road, we have to bring it back up, I'll look in, that's, that's not the way it should go.
Fair enough, I would agree, and you will, and we'll point out. Whenever we have questions, I always say I'll look into it, and I get back to you, I got back to you today. On our cold weather policy, got back to you on our eligibility policy, answered your questions. And when I called Mike to talk to him about what I found out last January, when we discussed it, that was me getting back to him.
Well, see, that's the thing, though, and, and I think that's what happens a lot, is Mike will get these calls. And because Mike says, yeah, it's not the board. It, it's not, Mike, Mike is an individual, like they tell us that our phase one and phase two training that you brought up to me. That's what I'm talking about, the phase one and phase two. So he doesn't have individual power, he doesn't, it's the whole board. So when, when you do stuff like that, that's what I'm saying. It's not, nothing personal, but you can't call Mike, and Mike goes, oh, okay, yeah, well, the rest of the board doesn't know about that.
And there was no.
This happened a couple of times.
But there was no pending action, there was no pending action, I wasn't calling Mike to say, we don't need to do anything.
But that was the thing, we wasn't, that's what, we weren't told that, we weren't told that. I said, I asked, do we need to take action? I, I do, I know I asked that. Oh, no, I'll take care of it, I'll let the principals know, and we'll take it from there.
And the answer was, no, we don't need to take action because the policy has already died. And I will find out what the situation is, and I'll talk to the principals about it.
So these team things are reported, right?
Yep.
So we should have that last. Last meeting on the recording. I'm just gonna ask, go back and listen to the end of that meeting. And then you tell me what you heard and then what I asked, and then we're good from there.
Okay.
I mean, I won't be back, I mean, I won't be on the board, but we can share with these guys. But it's been a privilege and an honor working with you guys.
Well, we're still on the board till, uh, January, uh, January second.
Third. Third, change to third.
And we're done.
On that note, Mr. McLean, I was going to say to you too. Thank you for your service, I have appreciated working with you, except for the occasional agree, disagree, and times, but I do appreciate your passion. Your commitment, and I thank you for your time on the board.
Yeah, welcome. I'll look out for these kids, regardless of them on the board or not, so you guys will know when you get a call.
We know, we'll see, we must at the meeting.
No, you won't. Won't be doing that. Won't be doing that.
I want you to get a ride on the electric bus as soon as we get it here.
That last, but know that last conference that we went to, you guys missed out on a really good conference in Vegas NISA. You guys probably need to start going to those conferences because we went and we got surprised because now they have a federal land people involved with NISA. So it's like, they're trying to make an alliance, but I just don't trust it.
The Impact Day group?
Yeah, NISA, federal land management people, they're the military. They're, they're coming to those conferences now. So we were talking with other native schools that are, we're looking at it the same way we were, like through a, through a lens that isn't promising for us. And another thing too is we're starting to find out that like our immersion school here isn't the only one that's getting federal dollars tossed at them. It seems like it's going on across the country and all Indian country. So we were discussing that too, weren't they, that they're gonna try. Red Lake's in a unique position, you know, just because we have those treaties with the, with the federal government and the states. State here. I would be cautious of next steps.
For the military and then schools that are military schools. Department of Defense, they get the Impact Day money plus they hit the Department of
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what we need to be there.
Well, that's the thing. But what they're doing is they're splitting that money up now. I think Yeah, so like I said, I think you guys need to start attending those meetings and uh, listening to that. It, it's, it's interesting. It's scary at the same time. Because I wanna say that some of that funding might have got cut under. Sounded like they were cutting some more funding, so the dollars didn't, it's just gonna be wild out there for the next couple of years.
With the surplus where Minnesota has, hopefully the governor puts more into education.
Or is that, is the king building or 1.7?
17, yeah.
Or do they got control of the house and the senate too in itself?
Yeah.
Yep, it's the same thing with the, with the FIBs. So you gotta, like I said, you're gonna have to really be cautious. There's some, and then like a couple of the supporters of NISA are the Impact Day that we get from federal government. I think a couple of those got, one got voted off, one passed away. Um, the one from Alaska, he passed away. And then there was another one that they said resigned. So they're also, they're the ones, the writers of the bills that they sent up to, up to the Hill. For money, so.
There's Mary Petola. I think that's how you pronounce her name. Yeah, she's alive.
Did she pass?
Young passed.
He just got elected, so. But it's in the Howard's fold. We got her support.
But yeah, guys probably need to start trying to attend those, those meetings.
Yeah, encourage youngsters to go because it was about two years, maybe three, by the time I dared to ask, hey, can I go to the, can I go to DC?
Come on, Ron, you're, you're gonna run for Oregon in two years anyway.
Coming here and saying that you shouldn't, you shouldn't be spending that money on a boy and girls club instead of all these guys going to Vegas all the time. You know, I didn't think that was right, you know? But what, what does he know about going to Vegas and going to these meetings? You know, he might know all the stuff about hip hop and all this, but that doesn't apply to us. We're, we're too damn old for that shit, you know? So that, it's gonna be kind of interesting then as to which way this board gets reorganized. And another thing is, um, you got this meeting coming up with MSBA. I don't know if we're still part of MSBA coming up in January.
Yeah, I seen
None of that has been mentioned. Oh, so we're all, we're all good for that?
That's the M, MSBA. State one. NSBA though, it sounds like Minnesota may be opting out of NSBA.
They are out of it. They're, they joined COSBA, C O S S B A.
And that was all over some quirky stuff too that we found.
Yeah.
Yeah.
March.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people didn't know.
Didn't know that.
Going on. They had idea about what was going on.
How about a new superintendent? When do we have to?
That's another thing I wanted to bring up.
We gonna, we gonna hire the state again or we gonna do it on our own?
We did it on our own last.
I think that needs to be brought up and that the wheels need to get set in motion on that too. Earlier the better, not wait till the last minute.
Yeah, Deep River is open right now. MSBA is working with them, Carlstead. Um, and a couple others, so.
See, they're, they're still under contract with us because they didn't They didn't We can still use them this coming year again. You know?
I think we need to make some move on that. The sooner the better, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, right away. I mean, you know.
Carlstead is way up there, the northwest. The Bush Middle River, they're all coming together.
So my sawmill came from.
Really? What's his name?
No, my sawmill.
Your sawmill? I thought you said selling law.
Oh, no.
All my sawmill laws are here. That's too bad because Carlstead's a pretty good source of good people. Good where I grew up.
Oh, one we do believe though, I did wanna bring up, um, so graduation this year, uh, I wanted to bring up, uh, post-moderant for Doland Charley Jr. Two would have graduated this year. Just to give, give his family something, give his family a diploma form. And if y'all didn't read that article, I suggest you do. Read that article.
And some more good news, I should mention that because of that article, somebody donated $1,000 to the school. And I have a meeting tomorrow morning, a teams meeting at nine o'clock with another couple and family who since who read that article and wanna give $5,000 to our school. So that might not be the end of it. We might give some more gift opportunities. Even the possibility is opened up now with the Adam Thielen Foundation for some kids to be participating in some summer programming. As someone saw that article. So lots of good things could come out of that.
And it was positive that the guy that came up, he talked with us. Driving up from the cities and back and forth with his photographer. It couldn't have been easy, but he enjoyed himself, so. Just to give you guys a heads up that the kid was well behaved and some of them were shy, but you know how they vote.
But that's all I got. Yeah, you need to motion good, Jerry.
I'm moving.
What are you guys doing? I was embarrassed. I vote at 3:45. Yeah, we won't have a corner at the third meeting. There'll only be three.